The music has stopped, so I'll call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order. Please stand for the invocation. National Anthem. And then... Corby, thank you for this day, this opportunity to come together to serve others. Be with us in our deliberations here tonight. Help us to be wise in the decisions that we make for the good of all who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. In your holy name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
We will now have the National Anthem. Outskewed the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, we'll...I want to thank the choral group from College Park Elementary School. Principal Maria Green. Maria, good to see you on the front row. And our instructor is Carrie Avalos.
Avalos.
Avalos. And if you will pass the microphone, let the children introduce themselves and what grade they're in, please.
Hi, my...yeah. My name is Carrie Avalos, and I'm the music teacher at College Park.
Hi, my name is...hi, my name is Diane Scott, and I'm a leader.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Elder, and I'm a leader.
Hi, my name is Cheyenne Rowan, and I am a leader.
Hi, my name is Carla Bonilla, and I am a leader.
Hi, my name is Jordan Hartwell, and I'm a leader.
Hi, my name is Leila Drummond, and I am a leader.
Hi, my name's Haley Zadovar, and I'm a leader.
Hi, my name is Taj Mitchell, and I'm a leader.
Hey, my name is Will Murray, and I'm a leader.
Hey, my name is Kevin Chiefer, and I'm a leader.
My name is Alyssa Robin, and I'm a leader.
Hi, my name is Leah, and I'm a leader.
Hello, my name is Aquasia Fogel, and I'm a leader.
Hi, I'm Emily, and I'm a leader.
Hi, I'm Damon Parker, and I'm a leader.
Hey, I'm the...I'm Kevin Green, and I'm a leader.
Hi, I'm Cassaria Stewart, and I'm a leader.
Glad we have so many leaders with us here tonight. We need it.
Wonderful.
Wonderful. Y'all don't go far, we might need you here. Mrs. Adams, if you'll call the roll, please.
Donald S. Hayes.
Here.
Jeanette S. Nichols.
Here.
Janice A. Capital.
Here.
Tammy J. Cobble.
Here.
Lisa Easta.
Here.
Derek G. Hickey.
Here.
Edward B. Higgins.
Here.
Item two is approval of the agenda. Any changes or deletions? Move for approval?
Seven.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose. Approved. Item three, approval of the minutes. Item A, regular meeting, March 5th, 2013. You just want to do all these at the same time?
Yes, please.
Item B is our work session, March 19th, 2013. And item C is our work session on April the 2nd, 2013. Motion to approve those?
So moved.
Seven.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose. It's approved. Thank you. Next, item four is our recognition of achievement.
Welcome to our recognition ceremony. Tonight we have two very special recognitions. First, I will call up Dr. Rick Holliday, who is going to recognize Pine Valley, Sunset Park, and Wrightsboro Elementary Schools for their achievements in the Positive Behavior Intervention Support Program. Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Ms. Paul Obama. And I'm going to ask Judy Stubblefield from my office, who coordinates this program, to come up and assist. This is Ms. Stubblefield, who works with all the schools on behavior and positive behavior support. Three of New Hanover County schools were recognized on February the 18th, 2013 by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. These schools were among 390 schools in North Carolina that earned one of three levels of recognition. In order to receive any level of recognition from the State Department of Public Instruction, these students completed an application process that included multiple reports based on behavior and academic data. The schools received recognition by North Carolina's Department of Public Instruction, did so because the faculty and staff at these schools demonstrated high levels of implementation based on PBIS evaluations. And as I call the school and give their recognition, I would like for them to come up here and then stay up here as all the schools are up here for a final picture together, if we can do that, Mr. Chair. Pine Valley Elementary School, who's been in this program for a long time, received the Model recognition, so Pine Valley. Principal at Pine Valley is Rebecca Op Grand. They get a banner that they hang up in their school, sound like a championship banner hanging from the rafters. And I must say, as a grandfather, that little sippy cup over there is the latest in technology. They don't make them like they used to. Sunset Park Elementary School, exemplar. Those sippy cups with this group, but they're just as equally recognized. And finally, Wrightsboro Elementary School, exemplar. These schools were recognized for implementation of positive behavior intervention and support at a high level of fidelity. Keeping students engaged and maintaining a healthy, productive school environment is more important than ever. PBIS is an approach comprised of intervention practices and organizational systems for establishing the social, cultural, learning, and teaching environment, and the individual behavior supports needed to achieve academic and social success for all children. Students that implement positive behavior intervention and support fully can expect to become more efficient and consistent with behavior management, use preventive measures to decrease unwanted behavior, experience a shift in attention to appropriate behaviors, and a witness...and witness a positive climate and philosophy change. To assure that PBIS schools in New Hanover County maintain this fidelity of implementation, layers of support are provided by the New Hanover County Schools Student Support Services Division and the state in the form of consultation and training. Ladies and gentlemen, these folks have done a great job. They're working really hard in their schools to improve their culture, and it's evident by the fact that their children are doing very, very well in their schools. So, I'm very proud of these schools.
And for our next recognition, I will call up Dr. John Wellmers, and we will recognize our newly National Board Certified Teachers, and also teachers who have renewed their National Board Certification. Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Ms. Paul Obama. We're very proud tonight for this opportunity to recognize our teachers who've achieved National Board Certification. This assessment process for National Board Certification requires candidates to complete two major functions or two major kind of goals through the year: a portfolio of classroom practice and an assessment of content knowledge. It's a very difficult thing to achieve. It is estimated that it typically takes almost 400 hours of extra work outside of the classroom to achieve this, and teachers are already working many hours outside of the classroom to be successful in their classroom. North Carolina leads the nation in the number of National Board Certified Teachers, with close to 19,000 teachers having obtained it. With over 400 teachers, New Hanover County is the number one county in the state for the percentage of National Board Certified Teachers, and we should be very proud of that. We want to congratulate, recognize the achievements of the 10 folks who earned this tonight, and the 15 who have redone the certification to come back as certified teachers. So what we'd like to do is ask if you'd come forward. We have a little plaque for you. We had a little reception a little while ago to recognize these folks, and they are doing an amazing job of leading the school system. Thank you for everything you're doing. First, Benita Bernie.
Wendy Lewis.
And Christina Satterfield.
And those individuals who have renewed their National Board Certification.
Stephanie Lawson.
Ginger Willard.
Heather Bostian.
Elizabeth Murray.
Frances Godwin.
Jennifer Perron.
Melody Bryan.
And Kathy Rispert.
We thank you all for being so kind and courteous, and that concludes our award ceremony this evening. Thank you.
Dr. Wellmers stated, I'm very proud of the fact that New Hanover County...we lead the state in quite a few areas, and that's just one more area where we lead the state in the number...percentage of National Board Certified Teachers that we have. I think it shows a commitment from our educational professionals in this county, the caliber, the quality of the educational professionals that we have in this county. Next item on the agenda is the call to the audience, and hopefully everyone noticed that the call to the audience was different tonight. There's a new policy in place that there are actually...well, tonight there are actually three. Normally, there would be two times for call to the audience. The first call to the audience to expedite the business function of the board meeting would be items related to the agenda. The second one tonight will be items related to the budget, which we would not have every time. But then the next call to the audience later on in the agenda would be any item that, you know, someone would like to bring, but we do want to limit it initially to the first one, to items on the agenda. Having said that, the first person on the call to the audience is Tanise Brewer.
Hi, my name is Tanise. I'm a finance computer operator. Outside work experience is among the valuable assets your current workforce brings to New Hanover County Schools. The measurement of our skill set and outside work experience is known as market value. Senior staff and supervisors recognize our individual value to New Hanover County Schools when they hired us. This is known as company value. New Hanover County Schools has increased its efficiency by hiring us and utilizing our outside work experience. I hope the board takes the time to realize you should not devalue the outside work experience that reliable, experienced workers bring to their positions.
Next speaker, Wayne Chamberlain.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Chamberlain, and I am currently the electronics technician for New Hanover County Schools. I am here also today to urge the board to pass the final phase of the work experience program. The final phase was designed to credit employees for work experience obtained outside of the local or the state system, as long as that experience directly relates to the current position within New Hanover County Schools and the duty that they perform for that. I have been an electronics technician since 1979, and I have come to work at the New Hanover County School System in 2005. Although I have almost 34 years of experience, including eight years with the New Hanover County School System, I am currently compensated as if I had only four years of work experience. I too, like many of my coworkers, were thrilled to learn that both the board and the administration had made a commitment back in 2008 and '09 to credit current employees for their experience, whether this experience was gained within our local school system or outside the school system. This provision not only enables us to attract new, highly skilled, and experienced workers to our system, but also helps retain employees who have shown their dedication and loyalty over many years. Having completed the initial phase and by hiring new employees in key support positions within the maintenance department and crediting them for their outside work experience, I now urge you to complete the program by crediting existing employees with the experience that they have gained outside of the school system or the state system. In my opinion, this would be both fair and right. New Hanover County Schools continues to invest in improving the quality, not only of the education that we provide our children and our community, but also in infrastructure, our technology base, which is ever-evolving, and our teachers and administrators. I would urge you to give the same importance in investing in retaining our valuable, experienced support staff today. I thank you for your time.
That completes our first call to the audience. Next item on the agenda, item six, budget hearings. We've had two individuals to sign up to address the budget.
Good evening, Chairman Hayes, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Markley. My name is Kathy Bennett, and I have the pleasure of working in the benefits section of the Human Resources Department for New Hanover County Schools. I am the workers' compensation slash benefit specialist and have been such for the past nine years. I appreciate this opportunity to be able to speak with you in reference to this budget proposal, particularly the final phase of this classified pay equity plan, the outside work experience. This will certainly benefit current and future employees of the New Hanover County School System. Having already sent an email to the board members earlier concerning this, I would just like to reiterate this correspondence. As stated by Dr. Wellmers' memo to classified employees in February of 2007, the Board of Education, as well as the administration, felt that it was very important to be competitive when recruiting new employees and equally reward current employees. This process was to be accomplished by increasing salaries of classified employees to a level that is based upon years of previous verifiable work-related experience. At that time, a two-year plan was put in place. In 2007, the first consideration was given to the maintenance employees, and from the information collected from these employees, their salaries were adjusted, and this was made retroactive back to July 1st of 2006. It was very significant for these employees and proved to be a powerful aid for employee recruiting, employee retention within the maintenance department. And according to the maintenance department, we now have a five-year record showing the success of this plan. In 2008, the remainder of the classified employees' work experience was to be reviewed, and this proved to be...helped provide a salary increase that was similar to the maintenance employees. The outside experience survey did require time and some effort to complete, and even in some cases, an expense to provide this...get this information. Well, we all felt that it was very important, and it was very worthwhile and able to do this, because we looked at this as a positive outcome from providing this information. And after the process was completed, we found that monies were not available, and we were asked to be understanding and patient and waiting for this budget to come around, and now we are hoping that the time has come for the remainder of the classified employees to be equally rewarded as dedicated employees of New Hanover County Schools. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next speaker, Deborah Duna, if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Distinguished board members, my name is Deborah Duna. I'm president of the New Hanover County Association of Educational Office Professionals. We're an organization made up of staff support and administrators working together to bring the best professional standards and support to our young people, their teaching staff, caregivers, and the educational system as a whole. Our organization supports the training, networking, life insurance coverage, and advanced educational needs of our members, as well as providing scholarships at both high school, graduate, and employee levels. We are part of a membership that is local, regional, and national. Nationally, there are eight regions, and we are part of the Mid-Atlantic region. North Carolina has over 1,000 members. Our district has over 100 members. Most superintendents and many administrators at New Hanover County Schools have maintained membership in NHCA EOP over the years, and Dr. Tim Markley is no exception, joining when he came here in July of 2010. Dr. Tim Markley was chosen as the EOP Administrator of the Year in 2009 while he was superintendent at Catawba County Schools. His nomination described him as an outstanding and deeply respected leader who cares for all individuals, the student, the teacher, the administrator, and all the support staff in the 28 Catawba County Schools. I forwarded a resolution of the New Hanover County Association of Educational Office Professionals through the Board Secretary verifying that our membership is in full support of the implementation of Phase Two of the outside work experience credit. This phase allows the remaining classified staff members to apply and be compensated for the work experience credit as outlined in the employee handbook and in Dr. John's memorandum of February 28th, 2007. Former superintendents Dr. John Morris and Dr. Alfred Lurch also supported this. Phase Two...Phase One was instituted in 2007, was effective retroactive to 2006. Phase One included the first three-party pay equity plans, North Carolina State Work Experience, Experience Credit for Maintenance Employees, and Transfer Step-Loss Credit. Phase One has continued to determine compensation for new hires as well. Phase Two was to complete the approved plan, bring all remaining classified employees to a level of pay commensurate with their verified work-related experience, and was to be effective July 1, 2007. There are 125 support associates working in 42 Hanover County Schools who interact and support our students and teachers every day, but this not only affects support associates, child distribution workers, technology staff, even teachers assistants, who come in contact with our young people on a daily basis. As was stated in the plan, these employees deserve to have the same recognition of the skills they bring to their schools, and the appreciation and support by creating equality in their pay as well. As funding has become available, I hope you will consider this an important part of keeping highly qualified staff in our schools and offices to provide the best learning environment possible. of keeping highly qualified staff in our schools and offices to provide the best learning environment possible. We ask that you please vote yes to approve all parts of the proposed budget plan as submitted by Superintendent Dr. Tim Markley and Mary Hazel Small, Chief Financial Officer, including the priority of the outside work credit, Phase Two. I'd like to ask those in our audience that support this plan to please stand up and be recognized. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item seven, information items. Item eight, superintendent's report.
None of this done.
Item nine, consensus items, item A, personnel, appendix A, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We request the board approve the personnel matters as presented.
Move for approval. Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's approved. Item B, budget amendments. State Public School Fund Amendment Number Five, General Fund Amendment Number Five, Capital Outlay Fund Budget Amendment Number Six, Federal Grant Fund Budget Amendment Number Two. Appendix B, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I request the board's approval of the amendments as submitted.
Move for approval. Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's approved. Item C, change of school assignments, appendix C, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board ask that you approve this change in school assignment to and release to neighboring counties based on the fact that these children are the children of staff members in our adjacent counties.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's approved. Item 10, under Old Business, item A, policy is on for second reading, Mrs. Nichols.
We have policy, anyone hindered admission and assignment of students? If you have any questions, Dr. Holliday will certainly be able to answer them. You see, it's an extensive policy and we reviewed it very carefully with the first reading and we did not hear from any public comment or any parent. So I ask that we pass, approve this policy.
Is that a motion?
Please. Yes.
I'll second. Have a motion, a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's approved. Item B, 2013, 2014 budget, appendix E, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you. I request the board's approval of the county request for the two-year operating request and two-year capital request along with the capital outlay priority listing and the associated capital outlay budget amendment for fund balance appropriation.
Move for approval.
Second. Comments, questions?
Mr. Hayes, I know in the past we have had zero-based budgeting and I think we've kind of gotten away from that and I'd love to see us go back to zero-based budgeting to better finance the schools in a logical manner.
I'm not, I'm still not in favor of the budget because of the support associate and volunteer program. In fact, I just think it's a needless expenditure at this point to add infrastructure and we're going to have a security audit and we have not talked to Castle Branch. I just, I do not think it's a wise move.
Do you want to make a motion that that portion be taken out of the budget?
Am I, am I able to do that?
Would you use, make a recommendation to reduce the budget for that amount?
Okay, I recommend to reduce the budget by the requested increase of ninety-five thousand dollars.
Second.
But before we do that, let me make, come in here, that my understanding is that in passing the budget, we don't really know what we're going to end up with.
Correct.
We're asking for a sum of money based upon what this budget calls for and depending on what we receive, there's going to be some changes.
Oh, I understand that, but I don't even want this in the budget. I think it's, I don't agree with this being in there when I don't, and it's kind of a tacit approval of this when we have not explored all options as far as I can see. And I know that there's going to be, you know, maybe we can come back at another point, but I do not see adding personnel for this position at this point. I do not think it's a wise move because then we're beholden to that position moving forward when it might not be in our best interest. That's my feeling.
I seconded that motion. I don't know if you heard me.
Now, what was your motion again, that you removed?
Removed that position for the requested increase of ninety-five thousand. I believe that's the whole thing in there. I'm sorry, I said, this is for what?
Well, yeah, there's two budget items there. There's a support associate, which is forty-five thousand dollars, and then a one-time ninety-five thousand dollar expenditure for the software program. Are you moving to strike both those items from the budget proposal?
I don't mind leaving an amount in there to fund a possible program. I really have the problem with the person because that's a long-term commitment that I don't know that we're going to use. So if there was a way of, I guess, reserving an amount, you know, I have no problem with the program itself and with doing background checks, but I think we can do it more efficiently than how we have it here.
So ninety-five thousand, Mary Hazel, and also forty-five?
See, there was fifty-five for the continuation funding of the background check and then for the fund balance appropriation related to the background check was, for the first year, startup was ninety-three thousand.
And that's a fund balance appropriation, not a county request, so that actually is not part of this initial request.
That's just for information.
Okay, so for the initial request, it's the forty, the fifty-five, and the thirteen-four, is that correct?
Yeah, the forty and the fifty-five is what is in the county request.
Okay, and then what about, it says for the requested increase for contracted services for background checks. Is that separate? Is that for other background checks?
The...
Okay, okay. So I guess right now I would just move to strike the support associate.
And that amount was what, Mary Hazel?
Forty thousand.
Forty?
Did you see the operating request to sixty-six? Not to change.
How would it be, Mrs. E Step, if your objection is in the minutes and we continue to ask because you know we're not going to get what we ask for? And then we come back, this is not like the bond where we had a cutoff. Then we come back and look and see where we really have to cut.
Okay.
And that would be one place.
That's fine.
How would that work?
See, I have some concerns also that, like Mrs. Nichols said, I know we're not going to receive that amount of money and there's some things in here that I have concerns with. Well, to me, it's like a pot of money. Once we receive that, then it was, okay, well, we're minus this amount. Now, let's go back in here and take out and that's when I'm going to bring up some concerns.
Okay. That's fine. If that works, I just want to make sure we flag that one.
You just want the opportunity.
Yes, yeah. I mean, this is my first year through the budget process, so I wasn't sure how to do that.
So that's, you've done a great job.
Thanks.
So you're saying then you do, you want to amend the motion or just, it's on record that you want that position taken out when we revisit the budget, once we receive whatever the allocation's going to be from the county?
If you're saying that there is still an opportunity to pull that back, then yeah, then that's fine.
Process-wise, once the county allocates a dollar amount, if it's less than our initial request, we have to adjust our initial request to match that.
Okay, so then I would just put that, you know, top of the list.
But then if they do match that, then we are essentially, this is a go. The budget is not actually approved by the board until July, when you approve the state, federal, and local. But if we're asking for this money for these particular programs, then it's, then it's a given that we're going, if we get this money, that's where these, this money is going to be allocated, correct? It is, should be the board's intent, but the board still has an opportunity to make that.
So we still have leeway to change, even if they give us the entire?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, even if the entire amount is forthcoming, we could still say, okay, we still want to cut that position. That's forty-seven thousand that could be put somewhere else or just decreasing.
What they do is they allocate the budget into certain categories and then you, so if you got X number of dollars in that one category, as long as you stayed within the, within that category, you can make adjustments.
Well, but then that means I'd have to stay, we'd have to stay with an HR and I just don't agree with that because I don't want the, I just don't think the funding should, I don't know. I have a problem with that because I mean, if we can make it undesignated.
Any changes the board wants to make at that point, they can and then it can just be amended at the county level. The main reason you need the flexibility is some of these requests are based on state salary and benefit changes and they're not determined yet. So you have to have the opportunity to come back and redress the file.
That's, you know, contingent upon what the state does.
Yes, sir.
And the final check is, as a board, you approve all personnel hirings as part of the personnel recommendation. So the position doesn't get higher until the board would approve.
But then we've got forty thousand dollars floating out there for somebody, but it can only be HR?
No, we could, we could change that and just decrease the whole amount.
Okay, but I'm saying like if we get the forty thousand from the county, you know, if everything comes up roses and we get, you know, the amount, we could designate it for, you know, AIG, we could designate it for...
You'd have to file a budget amendment, but yeah.
Okay, okay.
So it might be wise to keep it there just for use in something like that, really.
Okay.
Mr. Higgins, I have comments along the lines of Lisa's and actually to, Mr. Higgins hasn't said that yet this year, but, you know, we used to have a finance committee. I'm stealing Mr. Higgins's thunder because he always talks about how he wants a finance committee. And from my previous comments in some of these work sessions and comments I've had with, shared with many of the board members, you know, I really, in my personal opinion, that this is not really a serious budget proposal that we put out here. We're going to take as givens that we're having decreases in federal funding. We're having decreases in state funding. We're having increased costs to our pension benefits. Increased costs for health insurance. And what we're putting forth in a budget, which is, you know, nine million dollars over previous years, is an increase in central office hiring. An increase in hiring teachers strictly to provide more electives. Increased expenditures for technology. Nine hundred thousand dollar increase from the county because we're going to lose money if children go to charter schools. I mean, I understand that this is a pot of money and I also understand that we don't expect to get everything we're asking for. But this reminds me of how my children approach their own little budgets. They ask for everything and, you know, I have to say no. One of the things Mr. Higgins always says is that, you know, it'd be nice if the board had independent taxing authority. Well, I will tell you that, you know, as a taxpayer, when I look at my Board of Education asking for these requests, I say, well, I'm kind of glad that they don't have independent taxing authority because this board has not come up with a reasonable budget. You know, and I've said this in the work sessions, I'd be far more comfortable with us saying, these are our priorities, this is what we need. If the county's unwilling to give us these dollars to fund these positions and fund salary increases, if we, the board decide that's our highest priority, which I've heard it is, that if the county doesn't give us, willing to go to the mat and fight for it because we believe we need this for the school system, this budget just to me is kind of a slush fund until we said to, you know, Mrs. E Step, you know, well, we can just keep it in there and, you know, we probably won't get it and then we can sort of cut it later and if we get it, we can switch it to somewhere else. I mean, I just don't feel like this is a very serious budget we proposed and those are my only comments.
Well, as the person who has put the budget together, I would tell you that when you look at this, there's nothing in here that's, position-wise, will still be well below where we were four years ago in positions. Most of the additional funds that are in this budget are simply to restore salaries to a point where they were several years ago. You mentioned the increased cost. Our teachers and our staff members are the ones who are having to bear those costs. As I look at this budget, all we're doing is simply trying to get them back to the point where they were. There's three additional positions that you talk about that aren't growth positions, the one instructional position, the one central office position, and then the clerical position. And I've said, if you give me a choice between keeping our, taking care of our employees, yes. The other positions are, I'd like to have, yes, but they're not must-have positions. So I don't see a whole lot of fluff and slush fund in this budget.
Well, then we can disagree.
Yes.
But I will tell you that, you know, your second-year budget where you want to hire twenty-three or twenty-five additional teachers.
To bring us back to the positions we cut, yes.
To increase electives, you know.
No.
Well, that was, that was what you said in the work session. It wasn't to, it wasn't to decrease class sizes or that we needed teachers.
It was to restore the positions back to where they were. Some of the electives may be hard science lectures, they may be math, they may be core requirements. It wasn't necessarily to hire electives.
Well, you said electives in the work session. That was what you said. So the point being is we're not going to get nine million dollars extra from the county. And one thing I didn't mention was in addition to, you know, decreases in federal funding, decreases in state funding, we've also identified three hundred million dollars in capital needs. So in addition to all this extra money that we're asking for, in addition to what we've gotten in previous years, we're also asking for three hundred million dollars more in capital funds. I mean, it gets to a point where, you know, people who are sort of paying attention will start thinking, well, we can give them hundreds of millions of dollars and they'll never have enough. Again, I just don't, you know, if you don't think we need those three positions, then I would say, well, that would be a great place to start and say, if we don't absolutely need those three positions, we cut there. You know, if you say we need to give our classified workers pay increases, I won't fight you there. If that's our priority, then let's say that's our priority and let's say if the county commissioners don't support that, then we'll fight them for that. If that's what we need as a system. But I mean, I just think we need to sort of say what our priorities are and be able to advocate for those priorities rather than just looking at this as a pot of, you know, amorphous fungible money. That's just my opinion.
Can I make a comment too about the budget process going forward? It would have helped me to be a part of the initial discussions and talks, just, you know, even just as an observer, like with you and Mary Hazel. So to help me understand how the numbers are derived, especially coming in new, it would have helped me rather than getting, you know, the group of numbers and then trying to figure out what they're for. I would love to be a part or fly in the wall next year to help me understand how these are necessary and what the positions would do. Because it's a little bit more difficult and challenging in an atmosphere like this to try to ask all those questions. You know, and understand, you know, especially like some of these things, you know, we get it kind of right before we walk in the meeting. So I would love to, you know, be involved since we don't have a finance committee anymore, you know, more, you know, upfront.
Well, we could act, we could certainly make a change. We made a change to get to where we are now. We could certainly make a change as far as the finance committee.
But can I say, when we had the finance committee and I served on it for quite a while, there were three members. Two members of the three could determine what could go on the recommended list or not and the full board never saw it. So my suggestion was not to have the finance committee, but have a work session so everybody heard everything.
I think that's a great idea because...
I would, I would take a little bit of exception to that. You're right. Two members could make the recommendations, but everything else was made available so that the board knew. And when, when the board got together to discuss the budget, we had individuals who had given three days, not the ten minutes the county commissioners give us, but three days to listen to people make presentations, to gather information, and then to be able to have, as Lisa suggests, inside information, if you will. I mean, these were open meetings. They weren't closed sessions. Anybody was free to come to them. But to be able to make a presentation as to why, for example, this particular item was a recommendation from the finance committee, just like we do, you do with a policy committee. I mean, three members of the policy committee decide what policy comes forward. It's somewhat the same thing. And I know I sat on the finance committee for several years. Yes, we committed three days in April to come have these presentations. I have been in situations where we had a finance committee, then we didn't have a finance committee, then we have had one, now we don't have one. It kind of comes and goes, but I know when the, first year I was on the board, they had a finance committee and we came in, we sat down with the budget. The year before we came on the board, they had hired a new superintendent. The school system had allocated fifty thousand dollars for that superintendent search. That was in 1994. So we came up with the nineteen ninety, came to the nineteen ninety-five budget and started going down through the list. There was that fifty thousand dollars again for superintendent search. You know, we hiring a new superintendent? No, but, you know, we just, they had always done a situation where whatever they got last year, they just added... where whatever they got last year, they just added on for the next year. And as Janice talks about, zero-based budgeting, it wasn't truly zero-based budgeting, but we got away from a situation where because we got fifty million dollars last year, we were going to ask for fifty-five million this year. We actually had some justification for why that budget looked the way it looked. And we had some people from the board who had had an opportunity, who had committed the time to gather that information. And as I said, it was an open meeting. All members of the board were free to come if they wanted to. They could drop in, drop out, whatever. But I think it served us well. And every time I have been to a, a conference, one of the issues they always talk about is that boards get in trouble because they lose track of the finances. And I think having a board involvement in the budgeting process and other acts of financing is important. So, I mean, I would hope that in the coming year, we would reinstitute the finance committee.
Mr. Higgins, I totally, I, I support that. I, I, as an incoming board member, as is Ms. E Step, I, I spent a significant amount of time trying to go through this budget and sort of analyze, you know, what, what was needed, what wasn't needed, not having that information. I think having the opportunity to go through all of that with fellow board members who specifically been on the board for some time and had some experience would have been a little helpful and, which is the reason for, you know, my exhaustive list of questions, just because I did not feel that I had a handle on what I was, what I was viewing and what I was looking at. And I, I was not comfortable just sort of rubber stamping whatever came in front of me and, and needed to have some background information and some context. So I would definitely support the reinstitution of a finance committee.
And what Mr. Higgins was talking about, the presentations that we would hear, they were, they were the principles that we came in with their list of needs. But when we got to the point where there was no money, there was no need for them to come in and tell us the same thing every year because there was just no money. So you could invite them again and hear the presentation.
But there's no money now either.
No.
We have to, we have to prioritize and this budget doesn't prioritize. So as an example, you know, at the last, you know, we have work sessions, but unlike the smaller meetings you had, it sounds like, because I wasn't on the board at that time, those three members made a decision to pull things off. So as another example, when we talked in our last work session, one of the questions I had raised was about upgrading all the Microsoft licenses from two thousand seven to ten. And if you recall, one of the things that Ms. Brinson said was that, well, we may not have to actually do that. We probably need to upgrade all the two thousand three licenses, but we may be able to get away with the two thousand seven licenses. Now, when you look at the budget, the budget has allocated three hundred ninety-six thousand dollars to upgrade the two thousand seven office licenses to two thousand ten. Now, that's not insignificant amount of money to ask for. That's four hundred thousand dollars nearly. So if we need to do it, well, okay, but if we don't need to do it, then we shouldn't be asking for it. And, and that's, that's our job to determine whether that's necessary for the school system before we ask the commissioners for four hundred thousand dollars. And that's, that's such part of my frustration with this process.
And this is the first time we've had a two-year budget.
And that's at the county request.
And that makes it a little bit more awkward because it's hard to know what we are going to need two years from now.
Oh, I would, I would agree with Dr. Hickey in that, you know, I think it's important, particularly in this economic environment. You know, I, I know the, the ideal situation, if we had, you know, the economy was wonderful and there was, you know, there were, there was a recovery on the horizon. We just had some very poor economic news come out last week. You know, I don't see this turning around anytime soon and I think we, we continue to pile on and pile on and pile on. I would rather us sort of whittle this down, demonstrate to the county commission that we are able to be fiscally responsible. And, you know, as he stated, we're, we're asking for an additional three hundred million dollars for capital improvements and we can't, you know, we're haggling over a hundred and twenty thousand dollar in-house attorney cost. So, you know, I think we need to prioritize our list now and as he said, you know, fight for what we believe that we need. And if, you know, I, I think we should essentially have line item veto power on this budget and go through and, and decide, you know, what is it we absolutely have to have and, and what can we live without in the interim.
But, and at the same time, then I, I think we need to go to the county and say, we have done the job. This is our bottom line and we can support it. And, and that's what I'm saying coming into the process earlier. I'm not, I'm not, you know, discounting how hard you all have worked, you know, Mary Hazel, your department and Dr. Markley. But it's difficult to come in at the end and then, you know, try to support it to the county commissioners. You know, if we really don't know the process that had gone on, at least for me. And I, I, you know, I am concerned that then the county would chop it further if they, you know. I can, I can see the, the point in asking for more, but I, I think we have to make it clear to the county commissioners, we've gone through this budget and this is our bottom line. This is, you know, this is what we need to survive.
See, I don't feel that this, this is our bottom line. That's, that's what I'm concerned about because I feel that there are things in here that all, that would be great if we could, you know, we could have a director of innovative programs.
Right, but do you understand what I'm saying that, that?
Yeah, I, I do.
We have to be able to support whatever we, we, we send over there.
Right.
Whatever it is.
And as it is now, I can't support it.
Well, I think there are two issues. One is that.
Whoops, sorry.
We could certainly, if it's the wishes of the board, have the policy committee look at the policy because it would, the policy was changed concerning the finance committee. That if it's the will of the board to, to change that and go back to that type of procedure.
I think that's something we can discuss later. It'd have to be done.
That's what I'm saying. We could certainly do it, but I think it would have to be initiated through the policy committee because there's a policy involved. So I think that would be the place to start there. That's issue number one. The second issue is the, we have a motion to approve the budget here tonight. And a second, now, do you want to withdraw that or? To take care of your concern, Tammy, that what other changes do we want to make?
Let's be clear. This is an approval of a recommended request. It is, I mean, you know, when you say approval of a budget would imply that this is the final budget. This is a recommendation of a request and request is the appa- applicable.
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 Anyway.
It is, it's, it's the main word. Meaning that, you know, what we're doing is we're just simp, we're saying to the county commissioners, this is the recommended budget which the superintendent has brought to the board. The board has reviewed it and now we are recommending that you consider it. I mean, it's not locked in stone if they, you know, whatever they ultimately provide, even if they provide everything, we still then have to go back and approve a budget.
Yes, but we're, we're putting this forward as this is what.
We would like to have.
We would like to have, not what we need.
Well.
This is, this is a wish list.
I don't think there's anything in here that we don't need, but there may be some things in here that we can live without.
Exactly.
That, even if this amount were approved, we're still behind what we were several years ago.
Yeah, when you look at, any way, any way you slice it, in terms of budget, it's smaller. In terms of personnel, we're still hundreds of employees below where we were at our peak point. If you look at it on a per pupil basis, we are percentage points below where we were on our, in terms of our per pupil. When we went through the budget process last year, the instructions were ask for everything. Let them decide how much they want to cut. This year, we're flipping the instructions now and saying we're going to ask for, this is the minimum we're asking for. I mean, at this point, it's the board's decision as to which way they want to go. This is, as, as Ed stated, basically this was a recommended budget. You, as a board, you can say, no, it's too high. We need to ask for this much and, and we'll make it work.
Well, let me just clarify, you know, there are items on this proposal that I certainly support. But I don't want to have to oppose it because, because of the items that I don't support.
I mean, then as a board, you decide how much you want to reduce this recommendation by. I mean, because basically I, we as a, we provide, this number is the starting point for you. You can accept our starting point or say, no, we need to start at a lower number. You can even say, no, I think you underestimate it and you should be, have a higher number.
See, one problem I have too with, with reducing a number, I, I can certainly appreciate some redistribution, so to speak. Because I think there's some very important things in here such as a supplement, the work experience, all these types of things that we really need to keep in here and that if we, if we cut something, then we might not receive that amount and we might have to redistribute some of the money anyway to cover those items if I made that.
Yeah.
Should we, do we send over this detail to the county when we send the request? We do, okay.
They've had it since it was public information as a proposal and they would get the final copy.
But you, but you send it to them again?
Yes.
Any changes you make tonight, we'll make the adjustment and send them the updated copy.
Okay.
Now, if there are things on here that you don't want to include in that, it's, I mean, at this point, it's a matter of subtraction. If, if you think we missed something and you think we should add something, let us know. We can, we'll add it in.
Well, at a minimum, Ms. Brinson, do we need to do the two thousand seven Microsoft to two thousand ten license update?
Absolutely have to. Would it make things simpler and easier? Yes.
Okay, so I would like to move, remove that four hundred thousand dollar item. I'd also like to remove that nine hundred thousand dollar item we're asking from the county commission to give us because they're going to be, we're going to be giving that to the charter schools. I mean, you know, we're not, I mean, I get it, just because the children decide to go to charter schools, it doesn't really decrease our expenses, but, but the whole idea is that, you know, we're, we're asking for money for students that we're not educating.
Did you say you're making a motion?
Well, I guess so. I guess that the.
I, I don't think you can do that when there's an amendment on the table. I think you have to take care of this amendment before you can take care of another amendment.
No, he can amend. He can amend.
He can amend the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless you want to vote, unless you want to vote on this budget, in which case I'll just vote no. I mean, you know, it still, still probably pass, but, you know, but I'm, I'm, I'm not comfortably asking for that nine hundred thousand dollars. Am I asking, comfortably asking for another four hundred thousand dollars? Because my fear is that, you know, Ms. Brinson said that we don't absolutely need that and if we get the money, then we'll actually spend it. And I, and I don't want to spend four hundred thousand dollars that we don't need to spend.
May I ask Mrs. Brinson, you said it will make it easier. Are we talking classroom teachers?
Yes, we are talking classroom teachers and students.
Who are now struggling and the time that they use trying to upload the programs is taking valuable classroom time.
It's the conversion of the files, you know, when kids at home have the latest version.
Yes.
And we don't have the latest version here, it's them knowing how to save it to a different version and teachers saving things down, so it makes it easier for them to open the file, send it in. The teachers open the file back and forth. That's what we're talking about.
And this problem.
We've had the issues in previous years with different versions and it's, it's frustrating for the students, frustrating for the parents because they may or may not be able to help and that's an excuse that the kids have. They have the file, teacher can't open it or the kids can't open a file that a teacher's published.
And if this amendment's approved, how long would it take to get all of that in the schools working? Is it one, two years?
Oh, no, it'd take less than that. I mean, we'd, we'd have it done, you know, within probably the first six months of the year.
And this is Microsoft two thousand ten?
Yes.
So, and it looks like they're coming up with updates every three years?
Yeah, and that's why I said there's, there's different options for purchasing. I mean, the, the way that some LEAs do and what the county does is they actually pay for a renewal license. They pay a yearly fee to Microsoft that allows them to stay up to the latest version of the operating system as well as Microsoft Office. We've not been able to afford to do that because we're looking at, you know, eighty to ninety thousand dollars a year. I'm going to research that process as well because if we're able to come up with that cost each year, then that is the way to go because it would be less expensive than you're looking at four hundred thousand for one and another, you know, three hundred and thirty thousand. So I was going to go through that process and kind of come back and say, okay, this is, if we do this full-time equivalent employee number, this is what the cost would be for a year. The board's willing to support paying that as a yearly thing from here on out. Because once you stop that we don't have those licenses at all, then I would be recommending that process versus buying the licenses outright.
And then we would have to, at that point, if you do that, we would have to bring it up to date first and then pay that, that yearly fee? Is that how it would work, do you think?
No, you pay that yearly fee right away from the beginning, from the get-go.
But I mean, like, would they then, would they require us to update to the latest version first? Okay.
No.
And as relates to the issue with, with the charter school funds, that's a lump sum that comes out. But unfortunately, sometimes, an example, if I take one kid out of twenty schools, that's cost me, that's the equivalent of a teacher. But there's, by only taking one kid out of one school at each, at different locations, I don't get to reduce a teacher from my program piece. So I still have to pay the same cost. Now, you multiply that over the, over the district and over the different programs, we still end up paying the cost, the related cost for that nine hundred thousand dollars that we're sending out to charter schools because it doesn't cause a, an equal reduction in terms of service we're providing to those students to go to charter school.
No, I, I get that, but it's sort of, we'd be in a similar, right, right now, we're in an enviable situation in the sense that we have increasing enrollment. Now, if we were a district with decreasing enrollment, we, we would still have the same problem as, as the charter school problem. We would have children leaving, but not leaving in a symmetric fashion so we could sort of get rid of, you know, staff or, you know, downsize staff and we, we'd still be faced with decreasing our budget. I mean, you know, I, trying to tell taxpayers that we receive this much money from the state to educate these children, but now these parents have decided to put their children into a charter school. So we're not going to get that funding because we're not educating those kids. That's something that taxpayers understand. But then saying, okay, we're going to ask the county to give us the money that we're no longer getting, even though we're not teaching these kids. I mean, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to most people. I mean, I kind of, I mean, I get it, this, this, you know, we're losing in terms of efficiencies and scale.
But, but to address Dr. Markley's point, it does make a difference. The example he gave was, you know, if you pulled one.
No, I know, I, I get it.
You know, so we're suffering.
We don't, I don't get to reduce my.
Right.
Cost necessarily just because some kids go to a different school. My costs still stay the same. Now, it may, is it, is it exactly the nine hundred thousand dollars? Probably not. And there's probably some scaling back I can do there, but it's, nine, those kids and their dollars going to the charter school, I'm still going to have a lot of the same costs irregardless of, of where they are. Mary Hazel, looks like she's ready to, to bail me out on the explanation.
Well, a, a lot of our county funding goes toward, to more fixed cost types of things like utilities that, that don't necessarily change per pupil. Not all of it. We do have a lot of instructional things that are per pupil. A lot of the per pupil savings that come with, with the change in pupil numbers, that's savings in state dollars. And so, you know, it is hard to estimate before we know which kids will enroll and from which schools will they leave. I'd be able to give you a much better number next year. This was just an estimate of the impact. It may be more or less. But that, the, the impact on county is a little bit harder to estimate than the impact on state.
Yeah, five kids leave partially, I don't get to reduce the electrical bill by ten thousand dollars.
But that's determined at the state level, yes?
When you're looking at, at funding again, state handles generally the operational side, teacher side. The local funding really handles a lot of the, the operational side of what we're doing, buildings, maintenance and things like that. So when these kids leave a school, they, I, I may see a reduction in my teacher allotment from the state to match that, but my heating cost doesn't go down.
Oh, we've saved a million dollars on this new thing, so I don't know if we're that.
But we've said that.
I guess the question becomes, it becomes, you know. It's, it's like we're getting, we're charging twice for the same student. And I think that's where the, the, the real concern comes. And we've sat here and debated this now for high, for thirty minutes. The fact remains, whatever we get, we'll have to live with. And Dr. Markley, we'll make it work. And so, I mean, if we pull nine hundred thousand out, if we pull the three hundred or four hundred thousand out, you know, it takes a million three off the, off the table. You know, does that make us look any better with the county? I mean, can we go to the county commissioner and say, hey, folks, you know, we were looking for eight million additional monies, but now we're only looking for six, seven. I mean, is that going to carry any weight with them or do we just go with the full amount and let the, let the cards fall where they will? go with the full amount, and let the, let the cards fall where they will?
Well, I think they understand the position we're in, and it's just like with the 300 million dollar needs for a bond. I don't think they would ever expect us to present a 300, an idea for a 300 million dollar bond. We've never done that in the past. We were just asked to determine what the needs are, present a figure, and then see, over a period of time, what would be reasonable, and, you know, the most urgent to address.
You had the community college, you never asked for 168 million, whether we either showed.
Right. So, I, I don't think they're, you know, that, we're not expecting that, and-
I think that's a discussion for another time, though.
Right. But the, the only suggestion I had here is that I don't know if we wanna go line by line and decrease, or whatever. We had a motion to approve it. Now, my understanding, Dr. Markley, is that if the budget is approved, then the figure that comes back from the county commissioners, we then could have a work session, we would have to have, and then say, okay, even if that figure were arrived at, changes still could be made, because I don't know how we're gonna go have a motion every time one of these little things tonight, you know, a series of motions. Is that the will of the board to?
Process-wise, if you, whatever number you approve, we'll send it to county. They'll say, this is what we're, we're willing to fund, and then we'll have to adjust this budget. And that's where we're at. The other option is if this motion fails on the budget, is you can do these line item by line item. You hear your name.
My, my concern is that we're, we're essentially abdicating our, our role and our responsibility and to the county commission. We're saying, this is how much we'd like, you tell us how much you'd like to give. And, you know, this is one of the chief, the most important things that we do as a board. And if we can't, you know, go forward and say, this is what we absolutely need, what's the point? Why even have this, why even have this discussion?
And we actually, I mean, again, to, to Ms. Cobble's point, you know, it's about priorities, and I would tell you that, you know, I do support a significant increase in capital expenditures. So, I, so I really believe that the school system needs more than what we're asking for, but, but again, the things that we're asking for in this budget, I don't really support.
Well, you got two budgets. You got the operational budget and the capital budget.
Yeah. Well, I'm, you know, I'm just saying, but the county's gonna give us so much money, and they can give it to us for operations or for capital.
But the operation's the ongoing piece, the capital is the one-time, year-to-year money, so.
Well, I know, but, but my point is that, you know, since money, I mean, I love the word fungible. My lawyer friend said to me one time, I love the word. You, you can use money for anything, it's nice, you know? You can spend it on anything you want. But the point being is that, the county's gonna give us what they're gonna give us, and, you know, there's a lot of things, you know, like those Microsoft licenses, and it's like a broken record, and they'd be nice. You know, it'd be really nice to give every public school child a 2013 laptop to take home. That would make things really, really simple. But that's, but we don't have the resources for that, and it's, and again, it's about priorities. If the county gave us that, we could give every student a 2013 laptop. But we know they're not gonna give that to us, so we don't ask for it. We probably just need to vote on this budget, and see if it passes or fails, that'll be my, I guess I call the question.
Well, we have, do you still vote to amend it, Ms. Eastep? Do you want to withdraw that? The, if you want to amend it-
Thinking. I, I just, well-
See what you started?
What?
You see what you started?
I, I know, I'm sorry.
It's your fault.
I, I guess I had, I mean, I, I, I still do have a problem with handing over this detail and saying that we want the support associate. I know I'm focusing on a small amount, but I guess it's reflective of a bigger amount. But I understand your point. I don't think we can go through line by line, I think it would take forever. So, I think I'm talking myself into letting it lie right now, with my reservations being, yeah, with being noted.
So, you're withdrawing your motion?
Your amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so now, we have a motion, and a second. Would anyone else like to amend the motion?
Who made the original motion to approve the budget?
I think Ms. Nichols, Ms. Kavanagh seconded it.
Uh, Ms. Eastep made the motion for the amendment. I seconded it, but now she-
No, but for the original motion.
Oh, the original motion, I believe I made it.
Okay.
And I think Mr. Higgins.
Did Mr. Higgins, yeah, did you second it?
He seconded it.
I'll take credit for it.
Okay, Mr. Higgins seconded it.
All right, so procedurally, we're back to the original budget as presented.
Any other comments, questions? Because the original motion is to approve the budget, period.
As presented.
As presented.
Budget request.
Budget request.
My only comment would be that this was a very good exercise in how we feel about this budget. It's important, because we actually, we have to go forward, we're gonna have to approve a real budget, based on what the state gives us, and the federal government gives us, and the county gives us. And we've had a good, frank, public discussion in how we feel, and that's important.
And we've set the wheels in motion for the policy committee to look at the-
The departments will come back to us and tell us, really, what they need. You know, do we need the, again, broken record, Microsoft licenses? What do we really need? What's the most efficient, cost-effective way to accomplish that?
Dr. Hickey, you called the question, you're still talking.
And I'm blaming this Eastep.
If there are no other, if there are no other comments or questions, we'll at this time vote all those in favor of this budget request. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
I'll give that as five to, was that?
No, I think there was a light opposed down here.
Opposed.
Okay, four, three. Okay.
That's just the operating one.
I need clarification on whether or not the capital outlay budget amendment that was attached was approved or not in that motion. For the, it was for the capital items that were a little bit more urgent, the, the funding for the track, and, hold on a second.
The whole budget request?
And the initial funding for the Novell to active directory migration for technology.
The amendment?
It was my understanding that-
That was separate, wasn't it?
Well, it was on the same agenda item, so that's the reason I was asking for. It was part of Appendix E.
Page six.
There's, there's budget amendments that were separate, but this was together, because it related to the, the capital priority list, which you had to approve first.
What, was it in page six of fourteen?
Page six. It's 598,617 dollars.
Well, I guess it passed, I would've voted for that, though. Oh, well.
It doesn't matter.
Oops.
It didn't matter to everybody.
Yeah, I guess it pa, it passed regardless.
Okay, that's wonderful, thank you.
All right, so at this point, you have passed item one, which is the county request for 2013, both the operating and the capital. Now, we're moving to the, you really can approve next year's items, because it's, I'll be next year. It's, we'll present them as, moving forward as a part of the discussion with the county, but realistically, that's more of an outline for next year, not a list. So, we're looking now at the capital outlay priority listing.
Where's that? What page is that?
Which is, if you go to page seven.
Do you need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
And this would be the last chance you would have, at this point, to rearrange where those would fit on the priority list. So, looking at it, Mary Hazel, if I correct me if I'm wrong, but the gray line is, anything below that is not funded.
Right, for the facilities, and then, the others are broken out by each of the two years that you requested. Part of the, the priority listing is beyond just the cap, the county request, it also includes how you intend to spend the lottery money, and some of the other capital revenue resources that are on page seven.
So, this is not just asking to the county, this is all monies that you get for capital approvals?
Yeah, the county request is a portion of this, but it's, it's the whole, your whole plan, because then we'll move forward with, you know, beginning to the process, say, for the lottery, bringing you the lottery applications, and, and moving forward with the implementation of this, as soon as you approve this. Now, you, you could choose not to approve this till a later meeting, but generally, you approve it the same night you approve the county request.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so we don't have to approve this tonight?
It, it's completely up to the board. Generally, it is approved at the, at the April meeting, so we can move forward with some of the projects early, but you don't have to.
Well, we have a motion and a second.
I, I just simply would say that, you know, I mean, I don't know how comfortable I feel about this. I mean, it's, you know, five point one, almost five point two million dollars. And I know some of that's coming from lottery money, and I guess from some other sources, but, you know, whether or not-
And then what happens is, once we figure out how much total funding we have, that gray line will move up.
Right, I understand that, but, you know, I'm not-
Another choice is to wait and see how much the county appropriates. You already know how much lottery money you're gonna have, and then, you know, make a final decision on priorities, once you know that number.
We do know how much lottery money we're gonna have in the coming year.
We budget lottery based on what was received this year.
Okay.
We generally don't budget lottery in advance. Now, part of this includes an estimate of what we'll get for the rest of the, this year, which is projected by DPI, but funds received during this year are budgeted for the, you know-
How, how much, I, I don't, how much lottery money have we gotten in the last twelve months?
Since July first, we've got 1.7 million.
1.7?
And we, which represents a little over two quarters. There was a little bit from the year before that came in late, and then one point, almost 1.3, we're expected to receive by, by July.
So, between the two, it's about 13 dollars.
About three million dollars lottery money?
Yes, which is what is in this budget plan. We wouldn't actually, you know, draw down any money until we actually had, had the lottery appropriation. We, we receive quarterly amounts, but they're always late, you know, they have to process them, so.
So, where's the other 2.2 million dollars coming from?
That's our request to the county.
A, a million is-
And some of it's our fund balance.
The general fund balance for the, for the reserve, for the security audit. And then the two million is the county request, that's for the facility list. And then there are similar, the, the vehicle and furniture are being recommended funding from capital fund balance. Technology is a variety of general and capital fund balance, E-rate revenue, state equipment reserve for the state techni, technology fund, and then the county request for technology of 882,000.
Mr. Hazel, if I may ask you a question. I don't see anything objectionable in this repair and renovation request. Now, of course, it's prioritized in numbers one through 28, and since some of this will be a county request, we may not receive all the funding. Is it appropriate to approve this, ask for this amount, and if it's decreased, then if we wanted to, as a board, come back and reprioritize?
That's what we would do.
But, but I'm saying, we, we just said we'd move the numbers.
I thought you said this would be the way it would be.
Yeah, this, this-
But if you get- That's the reason I was questioning about, you know, if we decided that, okay, we got X number of dollars, do we necess, is it necessarily true that one through 28 is actually in the correct order?
Well, I think we could haggle over-
Maybe one, 28 to be 16.
I guess the first one we couldn't.
Well, I'm saying, like, I don't know, I, there's, there's not a lot of fluff in, in, in this at all, so I, I would, I guess I would defer to, you know, those looking at all of the renovations that are needed, and let them, I mean, I, you know, if you look down below 28, I mean, there's some necessary things in two, in there too, but there's, there's nothing that looks like it shouldn't happen, I guess, yeah, yeah.
It's all needed.
Okay.
But we could reprioritize if we wanted to, couldn't we?
I thought, I didn't understand.
The board has reprioritized in the past, if we had not started a project or finally budgeted. At this point, you're only budgeting the, on this list, the 100,000 for the track. The rest, we will, we will budget in amendments as funding is available, so, you know, we, because we, the state funding and the county funding is available at different times. So, as funding is available, we bring back the budget amendments for that.
I, I will call the question in deference to Ms. Kavanagh, I will then stop talking.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Question's been called. Technically, we won't get technical, we should vote according to Robert's rules, and have a two-thirds majority, but we don't do that. But all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Thank you.
Mary Hazel, we got one more, right?
Was there another?
Yes, sir, the, the capital outlay fund balance appropriation, capital lay amendment number seven, which was for the, the phase two of the track repairs, as well as the-
That's on page eleven.
Using E-rate and fund balance to fund the first technology priority.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Approved. We're through, okay.
All right. Under new business, item 11.
Shoot.
Item-
No, I'm not, I'm sorry.
Item A, audit contract with Cherry Baker LLP, appendix L, Mary Hazel, small.
I request the board's approval of our renewal with-
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item B, interlocal agreement between the Board of Education and UNEVER County for lawn and grounds maintenance.
Move for approval.
Appendix G, Ms. Hance.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item C, UR, URS security vulnerability assessment contract, appendix H, Bill Hance.
Yes, this is our contract with URS for the security assessment audit, and request the board to approve the contract as presented.
Move for approval.
Second.
Is this a flat fee, or is it, is it gonna-
Flat fee.
So, if he gets this, if they come back with a report in a month, we're still paying them 159,000 dollars?
Right, but they've given us a schedule, and it won't be a month. It's gonna be about eighty or ninety day process. We won't have a final report based on the presented schedule until July sometime.
And are they committed to how many people they will?
They've given us a list of key personnel.
And what they will do at, at the schools?
Mm-hmm.
And you're satisfied that this is a reasonable?
Yes. We looked at the scope of work, and we went back, and we talked to them about the, about the breadth and the depth of the scope of work, which we were concerned about initially. And we've sat, we're satisfied now with the scope of work as presented, and it's part, and it's made a part of the contract.
And where's this company from?
They have an office here in Wilmington. They also have an office, their home, their headquartered office is in, I believe, Germantown, Maryland.
Okay. But they are a local company for it?
They have, they have a representative office here in Wilmington.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item D, bids for Carolina Beach Elementary School, partial roof replacement, Ms. Hance.
Requested the board, excuse me, approve the partial roof replacement for Carolina Beach.
Move for approval.
Second.
I have, I have one comment, and I've already approached the superintendent, and Bill, and, and Mary Hazel. You know, it, it, it says here, you know, capital outlight, and what, I, I realize capital means projects, but I have asked that in the future, if it's coming from fund balance, if it's coming from lottery money, or if it's coming from capital that the county has allocated to put something, you know, just a one word, in parentheses, county, lottery, fund balance. Because I have a concern that if you look at all of these projects we have tonight, 2.1 million, I think it's 2.1, 2.2 million dollars, I think it could give a misunderstanding when we say that last year, we got 750,000 dollars from the county for capital projects, and yet, you know, in one, one night, we're spending 2.2 million. Where's the rest of this money coming from? And I think it's important that somebody looks at some of these documents, that they be able to recognize that that's where that, that money's coming from.
That's an excellent suggestion, and a need for-
I think that would help with clarification.
Yeah.
We've already discussed that in detail, and we're, we're gonna bring it by revenue source for, for each item.
I appreciate that.
We can vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Item E, bids for Ashley High School and Laney High School track repairs, appendix G, Ms. Hance.
Request the board to approve the track repairs for Ashley and Laney High School track.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we combine items E through J, since they're all bids, into one motion, unless there's an objection.
I second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion to combine E through J, to combine that all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll combine them now.
Opposed. Pardon?
I, I don't plan on voting against any of them, but just, I mean, I don't know, I think as a board, we should just look at each one of them before we.
But, but what do we vote on now, then, any questions you have, we can still bring them up.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're voting on E through J, all those in favor, please, well, is there a motion?
There's a motion in a second.
Okay, now, questions or comments, so, any of those now, Dr. Hickey, that.
Nope.
You wanted to ask a question about, or anyone? Those who have Roland Grice Middle School Kitchen Cafeteria, Hogarth High School HVAC replacement, phase two, no, bids for Noble Middle School, phase one HVAC. Bid for Roland Grice Middle School painting and bids for Roland Grice Middle School site improvements, any questions on any of that?
The only thing I would ask is about the Roland Grice site improvements. I, I know and I, I realize it's not something that's going to happen tomorrow, I don't know how pressing this site improvement is, but I do know that in the potential bond request, there is. Money to do some capital work at Roland Grice and I just, I wonder, you know, is this something that needs to be done right now, or is it something we can wait to see what happens on the bond request?
Well, I would prefer you to, I would prefer this to be done now. The bond request is, if we get the bond dollars, you're looking at probably two or three years off before anything is actually accomplished. If the bond goes in November of two thousand fourteen and it's passed, then the monies will come available, so you're looking at fifteen, sixteen before something is actually, actually underway at some of these particular sites that the bond will actually affect.
Well, I understand that, but, I mean, kind of like Dr. Hickey has raised the question, is this something that is in dire need today, or is it something that, you know, they've lived with for five years and they could probably live with another three or four?
Well, they've, they've lived with it for, they've lived with it for a while and you could always, you could always say no, but it pri, it was prioritized high enough on the capital list that it made, that it made the cut, so I would say that based on that, I'd appreciate the board approval.
Well, you know, I think it was, it was Lisa during our last year, bond work session, you have children that go to Roland Grice?
Mm-hmm, uh, since, since two thousand and three.
Yeah, she had talked about the, the sort of sad state of disrepair of much of the facility.
Yeah, it's icky.
Yeah, and I, you know, it's interesting because it's, it's a good school, kids get a good education there. And so you sort of don't think of it as a school that's in disrepair. I, I've recently had, a little girl has soccer practice at Roland Grice, so I've had the opportunity weekly to drive into the parking lot of Roland Grice and spend time back there and, you know, I would just say that.
It looks pretty rough.
It needs a lot.
This is coming from last year's capital that was approved last year.
And I, I have no dog in the fight, my children will be gone and by the time all this stuff is started, but I think it needs some, it needs some care.
We're trying to do away with icky.
Good.
Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they are approved. Item twelve, our next call to the audience for non-agenda items, and our first speaker is Ms. Julianne Kanjima.
Hi, everyone, I'm Julie Kanjima. I am a student at Wilmington Early College High School and we're currently in the middle of doing our senior projects and for my topic, I chose Montessori education and how beneficial it is to the students. And the reason why I chose this is because my mom is actually getting her master's degree in Montessori education and I really wanted to gain some insight of exactly what it was and how it went. So, I started talking to my mentor and I was interviewing her and she is Ms. Jennifer French, she is the director of Island Montessori in Carolina Beach, and one of the questions I asked her was, what's the main difference between Montessori education and traditional style education? And her answer was so efficient and basically summed up how Montessori works that I just thought I would share it with you, and she says, "Montessori teaching is about following the child and instilling in each child a love of learning. Montessori classrooms are carefully prepared and equipped with beautiful, engaging, hands-on material that help teach language, math, science, geometry, art, culture, geography, and practical life skills. Students move about freely during a long uninterrupted work cycle, choosing work that is interesting to them and working independently with a peer, in a small group, or one-on-one with a teacher. All of this happens in a harmonious way." So after doing a bunch of research on this, I found that, to me, the main characteristics of Montessori education is independence, individuality, and respect. And with independence, Montessori teaches that authority is found within a child and by giving children authority, they're able to choose how they learn and what they learn. And this will actually enable and empower the student to be more successful because they're going to be choosing their own paths. And then with individuality, this, um, Montessori education teaches students that there's really no need to be identical because in the real world, there's going to be tons of variety. And then lastly, with respect, Montessori teaches students that not only should they have respect for themselves, but they also should have, they also should have respect for others around them and their environment, and this is all done by teaching them self-discipline. And so basically to mainly sum all this up together, um, Montessori really just wants to instill a love of learning within a child. And just to show you how successful and widespread Montessori is, people like Taylor Swift, George Clooney, Julia Roberts, and then the founders of Google and the founders of Amazon, all came from a Montessori background, they all went to Montessori school. So, yeah, that's pretty interesting and I just want you guys to just look at Montessori education and just to see how beneficial it is for the student and how we could maybe incorporate some of their methods into our traditional schools, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I'm impressed with how well spoken you are. If this is the job that our early colleges are doing, I think it's, you're, you're doing a great job.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And our new policy is working because everybody's found on the right sheet. Wonderful.
I'm amazed. Thank you. Next speaker, Shannon Hutchinson.
Hello, my name is Shannon Hutchinson and I'm here about the elementary school assignment for the Anchors Bend community on Middle Sound Loop Road in Ogden. I represent the families and residents of Anchors Bend. Specifically, we are asking the school board to redistrict Anchors Bend from Castle Hain Elementary School to Ogden Elementary prior to the start of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Anchors Bend was moved from Ogden to Castle Hain because the outlook for the community was grim. Anchors Bend had little to no voice in that decision. Fortunately, the economic climate is shifting for the better. Forever Homes is reviving the coastal community, however, the elementary school district is a major challenge to the economic growth. I currently have a first and third grader attending Ogden, my husband attended Ogden, we are active PTA members and volunteer regularly at Ogden. We have many, we and many families want to move to Anchors Bend, but not if we have to send our children to Castle Hain. We're requesting immediate action because of the following reasons. Ogden is within walking distance of Anchors Bend. The bus ride to and from Castle Hain is over an hour a day. Adding buses to the congested Middle Sound area at peak times increases the risk for accidents. In order to volunteer at school, attend a meeting, have lunch with our children, participate in activities at school, or even leave our neighborhood, we have to drive past Ogden Elementary. Our children will not go to elementary with their school sports team, I mean, with their sports teams, church groups, or after-school friends, and once they reach middle school, they'll be sent to Noble and leave everyone they knew from Castle Hain. Where, there are four other elementary schools closer than Castle Hain, Ogden, Eaton Blair, and Murrayville. We're aware of the recent decisions for Wrightsville Beach Elementary and understand the widespread challenges New Hanover County faces with school overcrowding. We want to support a long-term solution, however, we need to support the needs of our families. Only Ogden and Blair require new homeowners to displace their children. This sends a mixed message to new residents. We want you to live here, but we have no room for your children in our school. The short-term solution is clear, restore the modular classroom that was previously at Ogden and make space for a handful of children from Anchors Bend. The board has chosen to accommodate over a hundred children at Wrightsville Beach Elementary by purchasing new modular classrooms. We would expect you to accommodate up to twenty children at Ogden, especially if you're committed to a long-term solution with plans to build another school. Another solution, redistrict Anchors Bend to Eaton, allow them to bypass the lottery or send them to Blair or Murrayville. We do not want to move any of our current neighborhoods out of Ogden. We have a wonderful community that we must keep intact. I appreciate your attention to this important request and I'll leave you on a personal note. My child and I, my children and I had just come from the lot on Anchors Bend where we had a picnic and had a great time, and on the way, way home, I was explaining to Blake and Chloe why they may not go to Ogden next year, and the car view, view was very quiet and Chloe looked at me and says, "Mommy, I don't want to go to Castle Hain, I don't even know where it is. I want to go to Ogden where my friends are. I don't understand, Ogden is right here."
Thank you. Item thirteen, any board correspondence? Item fourteen, under announcements, item A. The New Hanover County Spelling Bee is scheduled for Thursday, April the eleventh, seven PM here in the Board Center. Looking forward to that. I was the judge last time and I, I enjoy judging those. Amazing spelling abilities.
You can spell?
I'm a judge, I have it written down. Item B, the New Hanover County Board of Education will hold a work session on Tuesday, April the sixteenth, four PM here in the Board Center. Item C, the New Hanover County Board of Education will attend the Advisory Council on the Education of Children with Special Needs Annual Tea on Wednesday, May the first, three thirty at the Dale K. Spencer Building. Item D, the next regular meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education will take place Tuesday, May the seventh, two thousand thirteen, here in the Board Center. Any other announcements, any board member?
Permission to work session on the sixteenth?
There's a number of things that we postponed when we had our budget work session that were pushed off to, and we'll also, I think we're, pre-K will be addressed, NCBPS will be addressed, that's the two that I can think of off the top of my head at the moment.
The other items that required personal finance.
Yep.
Presentation.
Mr. Hazel? Every time we discuss pre-K, we, we always ask if we have data on our students of the sort of New Hanover County pre-K experience. Do we think it's possible we could get some data on how those children fare?
We presented that data in two thousand and ten and I sent that information out again, but we'll be glad to bring that to you as well as what's going on right now.
And what, 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 I mean, not, you don't have to give me a full synopsis, but that data looked at the children and their test scores going forward, is that what that data showed?
Sure, great.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Another announcement, just so if you're interested, uh, next Tuesday, April sixteenth, I'll do the, my annual breakfast with students from high schools, we're chanted to come in and talk about issues they have. I think, Don, did you sit in that last year?
I don't think so.
Okay, but if a board member wants to sit in on that, more than welcome to.
Don't we have the Equity Advisory Committee, well, that's coming up in the next few days?
Tuesday the sixteenth, it is.
Thursday, is it Thursday this week?
Yep, seventeenth, next week.
Next Wednesday, okay.
Yes, sir.
Seven, is the Equity Advisory Committee?
And the Business Advisor will meet that morning as well on the seventeenth at Howe Pre-K.
And Dr. Markley, when is your superintendent's art recognition breakfast? Isn't that?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, so if you haven't picked out your piece, please come by.
Where's the breakfast on the sixteenth?
In here.
Sixteen, here.
Here, okay.
Because I have not, I have, I forgot to go by there today, so if you have not been by to pick out the art.
I'm glad you picked out the best one, so.
Any other?
They were all very good.
They're wonderful, they're wonderful. Mr. Teasley. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we go into closed session to discuss a legal matter.
Can we take a break first?
That's what we were, we had discussed before we came in here that we were going to do.
The first closed session? Okay.
It's just continuation.
Continuation, so we, but we did adjourn from that closed session.
Right, so, motion go in closed session, Dr., Mr. Bullard, pursue it, the general statute.
One forty-three dash three eighteen, eleven eight six for, excuse me, eleven eight three for attorney-client privilege.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we're in closed session.